Student Board Member Singer.
Present.
Board Member Stapleton Gray.
Here.
Board Member Blanchard.
Here.
Board Member Lowe.
Here.
Vice President Black.
Here.
President Rosenbaum.
Here. And those who wish to participate.
When there's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Student Board Member Singer to read the mission statement.
Once he, yes.
The mission of Albany Unified School District is to provide excellent public education that empowers all to achieve their fullest potential as productive citizens. Albany Unified School District is committed to creating comprehensive learning opportunities in a safe, supportive, and collaborative environment, addressing the individual needs of each student.
The board took one action in closed session. The board voted to expel student number fourteen, fifteen, six, twelve, one, and to suspend the expulsion and approve the rehabilitation plan to be completed prior to re-admission. That brings us to the agenda. Do you have any comments on the agenda?
I'll move the agenda.
I can second it. I just wanted to note that it might take us a little longer than five minutes to cover item nine B. I probably have five minutes of questions.
Okay. I'll try to push this forward later. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 That brings us to tonight's spotlight, child nutrition.
Thank you, President Rosenbaum, trustees. Tonight, I'm very, very excited to have our May Spotlight on Child Nutrition Services. And we have our executive chef, Kell Hoffman, here, who is going to lead us in our, in this case, our child nutrition services spotlight. Chef Hoffman.
Hello. It's always great to come for the board and let you know what I'm doing because I really appreciate your support. You've been so supportive over the past eight years to help make nutrition services what it is today. And so there'll be four things I'll be covering tonight, first of which is a project we're participating in right now called California Thursdays. I had a video for you to show you a little bit about just kind of the transition of how it happens and whatnot, that the Center for Equal Literacy has put out, but the internet's not working right now, so I'll just talk about it. So the Center for Equal Literacy is an organization in Berkeley that is committed to improving school meals. They're a systems-thinking organization, and so they believe that the relationship between the classroom, garden, and the cafeteria are really important. And this is one of the ways they've done this. California Thursdays is a project where school districts or schools serve a meal on Thursdays that is all from California. So it's produced in California, grown in California, by a California company. We did this last month, and our participation rate on that day went up 21 percent. And we did it just at elementary level. I'm going to expand it to the middle school and high school. But the kids were really excited about it, which I was surprised, because we served chicken on the bone, which usually we don't serve. We serve boneless chicken. So it was Mary's Chicken, if you're familiar with that, a broccoli from Guadalupe, California, which is down south, a rice from the Sacramento Valley, tofu, you tofu nuggets, which is right here in Berkeley, and then a roll that's produced by a company in California. We're doing it again tomorrow. We just cooked over a thousand pieces of chicken today to get ready for it. And the kids are already talking about it again. I had to serve at Ocean View today, and they were asking about it, and they were cheering and really excited. So I've heard the parents are very excited. And I'm not sure if participation went up because the kids were excited about the meal or the parents were too, because the parents play a big part, especially at the elementary level, deciding if the students will eat lunch or not.
Well, what are the, I'm a big fan of tofu. So the tofu nuggets are, are they a hard exterior?
Yeah, it's like, it looks like a chicken nugget, but it's like a little half moon, a crescent.
A hard.
And it's tofu and it's breaded. And they also enjoyed those as well. Because we do it.
They do?
Yeah, we do a Morning Star vegetarian chicken nugget when we do chicken nuggets.
Yeah.
But they commented, the vegetarian kids really liked that a lot as well. Any questions about the California Thursdays? Did I bring the meal? I was like, yeah. Oh, do you want to show it, would you? So this is just a little video that the Center for Equal Literacy put out. Is there audio too? We can move on if you want. It's on the district website, if you want to see it. Shows how it all ties in. There was 43 districts, and the California Thursdays Meal, this last time we did it, was offered at 1.2 million kids in California. It has a big impact on the economy in California, too, when we use California products. So it's a great program, and I think it's really great for food services in general because the community in Albany really appreciates that kind of, you know, using local products.
Yes.
Mary's Chicken, if you know, that's a high-priced item that, you know, we can work in there. The next thing, another thing we're doing is, I'm working with Venture and the SDC class, special ed, to come up with a muffin that we can sell at the high school during break. And so the Venture class is going to be, will be providing all the materials with the money that they've made, and the SDC class will produce the muffin batter. So they're going to make batter, put it in tins, we're going to put it in the freezer, and then we'll pull it out on a daily basis and cook it so they're fresh, because they won't have any preservatives, and then they're not going to be able to hang out over, you know, it won't be as good. So it's a really great project. I don't know if you know, but I come from a Voc Ed, CTE, Curtech Ed background, and I really, you know, value the importance of that for kids who maybe not, won't be as academic. And to work with the SDC kids is really great, to give them the opportunity to do this. They're both going to work on the marketing aspect of it. The SDC kids and the Venture kids are going to go out and do taste testing, find out what the students like and don't like, come up with the names. Like, so they might do zucchini muffin, but I don't think zucchini muffins are going to fly, so they might call it a sunrise muffin or something, you know, because they're actually really good, and you really can't tell there's zucchini in them, so. But if you tell them that, you know, I don't want to eat that. Yeah. So I'm really excited about the prospect of that. And if the muffin thing doesn't work, I've talked to them about possibly just moving on and maybe trying to do a cookie or trying to do something else to make it work. We have served students in the class every day that play a big part in getting lunch out, and we have some workability kids sometimes, so I really rely on them. And then we also have kids that work at lunch that serve on the cafeteria line as well, and they get paid. So the students are really involved with the food service. Another project that I do every year with Loring Barker, it is an anatomy class, is a project where the kids have to come up with a recipe that conforms to the regulations for USDA and the state for fat content, calories, trans fats, things of that nature. So the kids come up with these recipes. I come back to the classroom, we taste test, and then we talk about them and ask them, would you buy this, would you pay for it? And I tell them why not I could make it. I don't have the labor for that. That's too expensive. I can't do steak sandwich, things of that nature. But this year, we did a parfait that was inspired by them, and the first eight days that we served it, we increased our participation by 46 kids a day to the previous eight days. If we could keep that up, that would be $20,000 a year just for the parfait. So it was really great. The kids really like it. Kevin Goings told me one day, what's with this parfait? I'm having to like block people out of line. They're trying to cut to get to the parfait. I have to get the parfait. So it was great to find something they really liked, and then it was the cherry on the top of the sundae was that the kids came up with it. And I put that up. We have a menu board that transitions to different slides, and I put, you know, Mr. Barker's Anatomy Class Parfait to give them credit. And some of the kids asked me, is this our parfait? And so it's really great when the kids are a part of that. And then lastly, we had our state review this year. We have a review. It used to be every five years, but we have new regulations with the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act of 2010, where they're going to change it to every three years. There's new regulations for serving whole grains. There's a requirement for half a cup of fruit. The kids have to take with every meal to be reimbursable. And so they came this year, and we didn't have any findings, and it was actually a really pleasurable experience. I think that I was in there with the people from the state one day in the district office, and we were being a bit loud, laughing and kind of annoying Jackie because she was on the phone, and I had to like close the door. So it was a great experience, and again, we didn't have any findings. So the state's working really hard to make those things easy and not be kind of like, you know, you're getting audited by the IRS. So that was, so we're kind of free for the next three years as far as not having to worry about that. So that's what's going on with food services. Okay. So. Yeah. So.
Questions, comments?
Always appreciate your innovation and creation and trying to include the kids. I remember when you did the garden, the production garden with the preschoolers, and I was really impressed. And now I'm really excited about you being able to involve the special day class. When are the muffins going to be available? Is that next year or?
Well, probably so, because the school is almost out, so maybe they'll get the recipe done this year and decide on what, you know, which one they're going to do.
I'll wait for the fall to drop mine and try one.
Yeah, and actually, glad you mentioned the garden. And the lettuce on Thursday will be from, all from the production garden of the preschool.
Amazing.
For all the elementaries, too.
Amazing.
We're really, it's really booming up there right now. We have tons of lettuce going on.
Just thanks for all the work you do. It's, you know, we've got a great school system here, and having really great food just is a real bonus. Keeps the kids around and makes them happy and makes the staff happy, and that helps them learn. So I think it's really part of the whole educational system. Thanks.
All right. Well, again, I appreciate your support from the board. You know, it's been, it's been great over the past eight years, and I look forward to working here 20 more. Well, not quite that many, so. All right, thanks.
That brings us to approval of the consent calendar. Do you have any comments on the consent calendar?
Yeah, I have something for one A.
One A. Anyone else? I have a brief comment on four A.
Okay, so we're in the minutes for the, I think it's April 7th meeting, page 13. It says, "The board and staff discussed the Cornell Elementary School Greening Project, and the board endorsed the Cornell PTA's greening project plans." I believe we only endorsed one very small part of the plan, which was, I think it's the planting and benches to be placed along the west side of the main building, and have not approved or endorsed the rest of the plan. I think the minutes should reflect that.
That is correct.
Okay.
We will make that adjustment.
Thanks. And the other thing in it, and I don't have this at my fingertips, on the next page towards the bottom, it's the Facilities Use Handbook. It says, "Staff will make some revisions based on feedback." I think the minutes should capture what that feedback was, if it's fairly easy to put our hands on it.
Yes, and we will be bringing that back at our May 26th meeting.
Right, thanks.
On item four A, as we approve the ninth grade course descriptions and curriculum, I just wanted to reiterate my concern that I'm hoping that we watch out for any kind of perceived tracking, make sure that students can move, you know, and figure out how that's going to happen, and maybe report back maybe after a year or so and see what's going on. Other than that, looks good.
Will do.
And I'm very pleased with the curriculum. Can we have a motion on the consent calendar?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Brings us two persons to address the board on matters not on the agenda. Do we have anyone to talk about something not on the agenda?
No.
Okay. Student Board Member report.
Thank you. So advanced placement testing has taken place last week and is continuing this week. The last test will be administered on Thursday, so Friday will be. Unless students are taking tests at other schools that aren't offered at Albany, there are no tests after Thursday, except for the makeup tests, of course.
And this Thursday, on May 14th, there's going to be a whole-school-wide arts festival. So the photography classes, all of the Ms. Tremblay and Ms. Bradley's visual arts classes, even the physics classes are participating and showing what work they've done over the course of this year in both applied and visual arts, so that's really cool. And it's catered by the culinary arts class, and there's also a few community art activities that are happening at the same time at the same place, so it's a big thing. It's pretty cool.
And the Albany High School Build-On Chapter has completed its fundraising for this year. The club has raised over $40,000 to build a primary school in Haiti, and the day after graduation, 17 students will be traveling to Haiti to help build the school over the course of eight days. And an update on the school from Nepal. It is unharmed as of the last earthquake, but of course, there was one last night, so we're waiting to be updated. But as far as we knew from the last one, all of the build-on schools were fine after the first earthquake.
A large contingency of the varsity swimmers from Albany Swim Team are moving on after last week's Tri-County Athletic League to the North California Sectionals, and it's very possible that some of them will move on to state and possibly national championships, so.
And last Friday, both the softball and baseball teams, the varsity teams, competed in Tri-County Athletic League playoffs. The softball team beat St. Joseph's. The baseball team fell to St. Patrick's-St. Vincent, but they're not out quite yet, and they put up an amazing, it was a great game. They went to two extra innings, so it was a very highly competitive game.
And track and field is having their finals on May 16th.
And the band will be hosting its annual concert in the park on the 16th.
Nineteenth. Dance is having their final show of the year on May 21st and 22nd.
And on the 26th is Senior Retreat. So that's the annual trip that is school-sponsored for the seniors to go down to Great America this year, and it's, not all seniors go, but a large majority of them do. And on the same day is the Kiwanis Reception for the students who have won Kiwanis Scholarships. There were five Albany students this year who received scholarships, and they range from $1,000 to $10,000.
And the class of 2015 is the largest class to, has the largest percentage of students in Albany High's history to receive a seal of bilinguism. A third of the class is receiving the honor, and we're just very impressed with them.
That's impressive, thanks.
So I was a little mother hennish when you weren't here, Isabel. I checked with Michael, so he assured me he doesn't have an AP test tomorrow. Are you finished with yours, or do you have additional ones?
I have my last one on Monday.
Okay. You had your last one on Monday, so you're free and clear. Excellent. Okay. Wonder.
Your last? Any other comments, questions? Thank you so much. Just thorough report, taking notes because I've been writing a summary.
Oh, you've got the tough job.
I got it tonight.
Maybe we should skip the president.
Maybe we should.
You like that one, don't you? Starting next time.
I've got another note taker in the audience. That brings us to staff report on the Albany Middle School Garden project.
Thank you, President Rosenbaum, trustees. It is my pleasure to introduce Ms. Joanna Pace, who is our Albany Middle School sixth-grade teacher, and she would like to do a staff report on the Albany Middle School Garden project. Ms. Pace, welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent, board members, staff members, and members of the public. I have a little handout here that I'll have Jackie share with you. And Jackie, do you put the slides up, or do I?
Here for you.
Okay, all right. All right, thanks. Good evening. This is, oh, there you go. Thanks. My goal tonight is to help you become familiar with all the basics about the Albany Middle School Garden, and end with a few pitches for some favorite ideas I have for the garden. First, let's start with where the garden is. All right. So let's get clear where it is. I don't have a laser pointer, but it's. Right here with the red arrows. There we go, yeah. Thanks, Jackie. So we're in the northeast corner of the school, north of the original staff parking lot, and west of the Barren's cul-de-sac. And the person who made it. Is that earlier picture? It's the previous picture. There are only five slides, so. Ray Johnson, the Albany Middle School woodshop teacher, when we moved into this site, and he was an original woodshop teacher when the school originally opened in the late '70s, founded the garden. He started a garden at the Ocean View site, and he would grow darts in the little utility cage that's out behind the woodshop, which is now Ms. Sinclair's room. And then he would take those darts, and he would plant them in the garden space that we, that he created back by the redwood trees, where there were various iterations of community gardens and things. And so when we were moving over to the new site, and the staff was very involved in the planning of that site and things, he cut his eye on that triangular plot up there, and he said, ooh, maybe we can put a school garden there. And so he did what he needed, you know, he asked questions, and we found out that apparently somewhere in the original plans, it was going to be a pocket park, and neighbors were not really friendly about that, towards that idea. And so it was, there were sprinklers put in and bubblers under the trees, and Marcia Skinner went out and spread wildflower seeds, but it was locked up, and it was just going to stay sort of a landscape locked-up area, and we got permission to make it instead into a school garden. So Ray taught woodshop and mechanical drawing, so his woodshop students, I mean, his mechanical drawing students came up with designs, and then his woodshop students executed the building of the original beds. And if I can take a minute here, the original sort of focusing feature was that there's a cement plug here. There was a well at the home that used to be on that site. We found out from old neighbors that in the basement of that home that had the well, it was the wine press, and all the old Italian neighbors would come and press their grapes there to make their homegrown wine. So we've got a little agricultural vibe there right from the start, before it was the lumberyard, I guess, so. So, you know, it's about a dozen beds to start with. So if it weren't for Ray, we wouldn't have the garden. It's used by an assortment of classes at the middle school. I take my sixth-grade science classes there twice a month. Other classes visit it sporadically. Drama teachers have used it for going out there and doing practices where you need a bunch of people to be talking and gesticulating all the same time, and you need a bigger space to do that. Language arts teachers sometimes just go out there to read or do journal writing. The art teachers have gone out there to do like life drawing kind of stuff. I mean, you know, like botanical garden, botanical drawings. And sometimes you'll find teachers out there just on their prep period correcting papers or reading, or I know Ms. Debbie loves to go out there on her break and just read a little bit of her novel. The garden club meets there weekly, and has since Mr. Peters started the garden club in 2009, and he and I share being advisors now. Cynthia Ma is a stalwart volunteer. She was a priceless gem of a parent leader at the garden at Marin, and fortunately, when her kids grew up, then we've been able to take advantage of her gifts and talents. And Amy St. George, who was a parent away a long time ago at the middle school, has come back. She's now a director of a food bank and sort of does a little overlap there. And so who cares for it? The garden is, my sort of philosophy is if you're going to have a garden, a school garden, the kids need to take care of it. It shouldn't be an adult project that then the kids just kind of come and, you know, observe it. So all along, I've tried to avoid coming on the weekend and doing the work myself, which is a middle school tradition. That's how we had so many nice flowers at the middle school, the original site. Bob Shogren would come on the weekend and do all this marvelous gardening, but I've always wanted the kids to do all the work. So it means we have somewhat of a wild-looking garden, because, you know, they have other things they have to do. So, but we couldn't do the garden without Diane Ichiaso, who lives in a little blue house on the east side of the cul-de-sac. She's helped us out from the beginning. All three of the neighbors there on the east side of Barren's, I mean Spokane, had, they had the combination to the garden, and they helped us water. As they've aged on and moved, now it's only Diane who does that. And she helps us out, and she's the person, the volunteer, who has actually put the drought-tolerant landscaping on the cul-de-sac where the emergency bollards are, so that the fire trucks can get through. And before, it was just weeds. And so she's brought in, like, City of El Cerrito's helped, and City of Albany has helped, and she has these college students she gets from somewhere, and I think she even works with high school students, maybe sometimes, doing some of their service learning stuff, so, or their community hours, so. So otherwise, it's kids who take care of it, and we adults, in my younger years, I would, you know, organize work parties several times a year, and there were like five of us teachers who were sort of really into it. And as, you know, generations move on and things, we're right now in a time when we're just not having that many work parties and things. Last year, though, I really felt like the garden was a fire hazard before the summer started, and so I organized something that I called Garden Palooza, and on one week's notice, I got 80 kids to show up, and we got rid of all the weeds, and we sheet mulched. And so we're going to do that again on June 2nd, and that's a flyer that you've gotten. And just real quickly to let you know what's in the garden, we have an AEF-paid-for shed that's been there for 15 years. We have 16 raised beds, five tables, two spigots, some drip irrigation, a collection of hand tools, watering cans, wheelbarrows, a seed library, propane stoves, a propane oven, thanks to Cynthia, she did the research on that, and an assortment. We can feed, you know, 30 kids with actual plates and silverware, so. And then to get to the nitty-gritty, down to the bottom there, the walking surface in the garden is wood chips that we've, it's layer after layer, 15 years of sheet mulching, you know, putting down cardboard, putting six inches of wood chips on it. And we want to thank Tony Walcutt, the city arborist, who gladly shares materials with us. This surface is not wheelchair-accessible. We've had a number of students who are in electric wheelchairs in the middle school, and their teachers can't bring them to the garden. We've had, you know, sometimes when they've decided they want to, the class to come out, that child will be on the concrete right outside the main gate. So that's, that's something I want to change, all right? And that's part of the reason why I'm here. You can see in the report, I've got a list of the donors, just in the 10 years that I was really gung-ho about writing grants. I haven't written any grants in the last five years, but AEF, Chevron, Department of Education, that was AB 1535, when Delane Easton was really into that, we got about $3,000, I think. Philanthropic Ventures, Aquatic Outreach Institute, which is now the Watershed Project, National Gardening Association, Community Learning Services, which was a nonprofit that was based in Albany, I believe. Center for Equal Literacy, which Kell mentioned, we had fabulous partnership with them for a number of years. Waste Management and the PTA. Ms. Shepherd, who retired last year, wrote the last big grant with Waste Management, and Cynthia assures me that we can get that again, but we just have to focus and go to them again. So our goal, one of our goals here as a district is to provide a comprehensive educational experience, and I just think we really could have some fabulous garden spaces. And I would just like to kind of put the bug in your ear that, you know, it sounds like, like, we have garden champions here and there now and then, and I would love to encourage that we sort of coordinate the garden champions and that we. to encourage that we sort of coordinate the garden champions and that we support those heroic parents and martyr teachers, which is what we in West County, where I...where my daughter goes to school and where I've been a parent activist, we've recognized that's what it takes to get school gardens, is heroic teachers and martyr parents. I mean, sorry, heroic parents and martyr teachers. So I want to make it in with a slight apology. When I gave you the executive summary, I said I was going to talk about a garden plan, but when I actually wrote the report, I talked about summarizing with the end that we need a garden coordinator for the district. I really want both. I am working on the garden plan with Cynthia Ma, and on June 2nd, if you come to Garden Palooza, you'll see us going to work there. We've gotten some fabulous donations. We're going to try to get started on a pathway, but we really need help. We need someone who can design a built-to-last, you know, at least 15 years pathways that kids in wheelchairs can use. We want to be able to get them from the gate down to the reading corner, which is the west corner of the library, of the garden, and we want to be able to get them to the shed, and we want to get at least one wheelchair-accessible bed. And we need some help. Cynthia's a fabulous trained architect, and I've got all these years of experience with the garden, but we're about maxed out at what we can get done. So I'm happy to answer questions about either the whole idea of a garden coordinator for the district, or our garden plan, or the Garden Palooza, or anything else. Thank you.
I have a couple of ideas off the top of my head. So, you know, one thing is that, because of course, same old story, funding is always really tight. I know that it was either the Albany Rotary or one of the local philanthropic organizations that built a number of beds at the Albany Children's Center before. So, you know, it's possible that if you reach out to the...to either a local philanthropic organization like the Rotary, or perhaps the city, you know, we might be able to mention it in...we have meetings with the city that...
In that four-five-four meeting.
There might be some interest. The other thing is, I remember that there is usually a regular crop of Eagle Scout candidates...
Yes.
...that come through each year that need to do a big project, and a number of them, like one of my son's friends built, you know, some of the stairways up in the Albany Hills, that also might be a good possibility. So, you know, those are just some good local thoughts that I thought of. And then I was also going to mention that my son, who's graduating, I remember when he was in the garden club in sixth grade and came home with giant...must have been a giant piece of kale, and said, "We have to cook this because we grew this," and I was sold. The kid has died to eat a giant, leafy, green piece of kale because we grew it. That's when I knew that those gardens made sense.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, thanks for doing this.
You're welcome.
It's wonderful we have this garden. When you're talking about a paid coordinator, is this a full-time position you envision, or just a stipend for someone?
Well, various districts are trying various things. A lot of it just depends on where the funding comes from. Anything is better than what we have now, and of course, I could give you my dream idea. In my perfect world, every school district would have a Director of Indoor Education and a Director of Outdoor Education, and that Director of Outdoor Education would be the coordinator, and it would be a nice executive job, so there you go. He's volunteering for it. So they take care of gardens and outdoor ed, so...and, you know, given the PE department bicycles, so... But more realistically, I think we could start with a stipend. I think this town is filled with people who love all things green, and I bet you if we just put the stakeholders in one room and said, "What do we...what's the basic thing that we need to better coordinate how we provide outdoor learning space for K-12?" And just put our heads together, I think we could come up with funders, I think we could come up with a job description, and I bet you we would not have to go out this...outside of this square mile to find a fabulous person to help coordinate all that.
I agree, and we should find out, you could do that in the two-by-twos, who actually is in charge of the highly-used and much-discussed, like, community garden spaces in Albany and all that? There's already got to be some expertise.
Yes. People at the Giltrach have come to us numerous times that, "Here, we want to work with you. We want to..."you know, and I'm just kind of like, "Uh, you know, can you help me correct these, you know, math tests?" You know, so...yeah.
I mean, you heard what Pat said. I mean, money is obviously...
Right.
You know, I'd like to look at how we build what we have at the Children's Center, because I know we've been talking at Wellness Committee.
Right, right.
And it's been a topic of discussion.
Right.
How do we do it? And, you know, I've toured the...
Yeah.
There's a lot of weeds in there.
Yeah, a lot of weeds.
But, you know, finding some of the sources that Pat's talking about, or look at who paid for what up at Children's Center, and funding up for it.
Yeah.
Maybe St. George's might have a neighbor.
Right.
So thank you for a great presentation.
You're back.
Sure. I wanted to endorse the wheelchair accessibility.
Thank you.
I'm thinking that I heard you say that classrooms go out to the garden during the school day, and I think if we take...if we take a classroom to the garden as part of the school day, I think we need to make it wheelchair-accessible.
I agree.
So I think I just wanted to endorse that, and I think maybe we need to look at that a little more in terms of what our, you know, what our responsibilities to full accessibility might be.
What would it take to actually make it accessible at any level? Little or no cost?
Yeah.
Then I guess I just wanted to also ask, I think you alluded to having other ideas about garden locations, and I wondered if you would like to share any of those with us.
Sure. I've, of course, encouraged people on the San Gabriel Committee to keep bringing it up, but also, if we really want to do production gardening, there's a big space between the Blacktop and Cougar Field. It's a long triangle, but if it...if what we want to do is production gardening, let me define that for you. When a school garden does production gardening, you're just growing the crops so that you can have a huge crop to then use for a huge cooking project, or hu...you know, so that say, Kell, he could more...he could depend on being able to do really local meals if he knew that we had, you know, X amount of lettuce coming in, or X amount of beans or whatever. And in our little garden, you know, even though we now have over 20 beds or 20 planted areas that could be crop area, it doesn't...it doesn't produce enough to feed, you know, however many kids he serves every day, or offers food to every day, so...so there's that, you know. If we want to really think big, you know, that...
Where is that strip? So there's Cougar Field.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't...I don't have a map of it, but...
Is it in the picture?
Did...I don't think it's quite in that picture.
Yeah, I think...are you thinking about toward the east side or west side?
So if you walk...
Closer to the Bart Tracks, or closer to the entrance of Cougar Field?
You know, do you know where the trailer is? It used to be the...
Yeah.
The caretaker's trailer, and now the specialite folks are there.
Yeah, yeah.
Basically, just from where there are little cage-ins on the west side there, and you head to the Bart Tracks, all that area there is just a...yeah, it's not quite on here.
I'm thinking...yeah, I'm thinking what that is, is that's where the creek is undergrounded.
Right, right. Yeah, if you...yeah, you want to think really big, you get the frenzied by creeks people, and you say, "Ooh, let's hope they like the creek."
We...I remember the board talking about that in 1999.
Oh, good for you.
And the...well, maybe it was a couple of years before that, when the school was being planned. At the time, the architect said it would be very difficult because it was covered with mulberry, and I never really understood why that would be difficult because it was covered with mulberry, but that's what was said. But at the time, there was actually a proposal to daylight the creek.
Yeah.
That's a bigger project, of course.
Yeah, it's a bigger project. It'd be a fabulous site for doing, you know, hands-on science learning, but I'm not here to suggest daylighting creek, but I am here to say, "Let's focus on this. Let's focus on how we provide outdoor learning space to all the kids," and...because I really believe with the community we have, it wouldn't take that much time and effort once people knew that, "Whoa, we're doing this," you could bring together some fabulous resources, so...
You might want to suggest that as the next topic for the...you know, the Wellness Committee picks a topic of focus every year, then there would be an instit...it would be kind of institutionalized within the district to begin a discussion.
Yeah, and this report's actually coming out of the Wellness Committee.
Right.
It's one of the things on the map.
Right.
Oh, I missed that, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I think we had to cancel a meeting because of a storm or something, or was that it? I thought we had...yeah, yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you.
Are you back? I have a couple...I can show you, this is what it looked like when it got started.
Before and after pictures?
Yeah, and then...
I'll tell you, you know, we should do some sort of thank you for Diana Ichiyasu, too. I mean, I remember when my son was little and we went over to help her, and she's still doing it. I mean, I think she can't be expected to continue indefinitely.
But she definitely sees it as a really symbiotic relationship, because it helps support her native plant. She's a big supporter of native plants, and so to have our supplies there when she has a work party, she knows she never has to go find shovels and...
Oh, good, good.
...wheelbarrows, and we've gotten some fabulous supplies of stone and gravel and dirt lately from Max Livingstone, a local contractor.
Okay.
And so she's using it.
Is that what that pile of grass is?
Yeah. So, and...yeah, and including some obsidian, if anyone would like obsidian rocks. I'm like a salesperson here. Free obsidian rocks, please come get them. Anybody wants them from their homegrown...
I'm serious, I'm going to be mulching over my lawn, I might take you up on that, okay?
Please do. Obsidian can't be in a school garden. It's not safe. So June 2nd, free hot dog dinner, and you'll see some kids in heaven. They love being outside, they love hauling stuff, they love digging stuff. It's really going to be cool, and we're going to transform the garden once again. And if you can't come to Garden Palooza on June 2nd, we will probably be having Garden Mania, one of the first weeks of school. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for all your work on this.
We're now on review and discussion items, and we will start with conducting the first reading of proposed Albany Middle School sixth-grade textbook adoption. Thank you, President Rosenbaum, trustees. At the last board meeting, Peter Prenti brought forward the textbook adoptions and course descriptions for, I believe it's seventh and eighth grade in the high school, and so he's here now to move on to the first reading of the proposed Albany Middle School sixth-grade textbook adoption for mathematics. Mr. Prenti?
Hi, Joanna. I'm Peter Prenti, Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and watch this. How's this for a transition? Smarter balanced assessments are in full swing this semester, and at fourth grade, at all grades, third through eighth and 11th, students receive a classroom lesson before they take a performance task, and that classroom lesson is expected to set context, and it's expected to introduce key vocabulary, and the students and the teacher can discuss those concepts before they're expected to then work independently on a very rigorous performance task. We talked about that a little bit at the board study session this afternoon. At fourth grade at Marin this year, the performance task for mathematics was called Community Garden, and each student needs a piece of paper and a pencil to understand the following topics: gardens, planter boxes, tool sheds, walkways or paths. This is exactly the vocabulary list you're expected to introduce. Fencing and weeds, those are the topics. And so we can only guess what the actual performance task is. I can't tell you what it looks like, because that would be confidential, breaking the law, but all of our students in fourth grade could probably give you a heads-up as to how that translated over to mathematics. I'm here tonight to present to you just a brief overview of the work that the sixth-grade staff has done to come to a good conclusion, to adopt the college preparatory mathematics as their core curriculum for mathematics. It is a great opportunity to bridge sixth grade with seventh, eighth, and ninth. As you know, we brought those adoptions to you a few weeks ago, and you approved them tonight on the consent. Tonight, though, I thought I'd focus a little bit on some of the essential questions that have come up. Joanna Pace is here in case you have questions about how teachers came to their conclusions and the experiences that they had piloting the material, but I want to emphasize that college preparatory math also helps us bridge to parent education. I contacted them, and they gave me lots of resources and links for homework help. I've talked to a parent who's actually explored those links and found them to be really useful. College preparatory math also provides us with free parent workshops during our first year of implementation. They're very local, and so they'll be available to help us advance understanding for the parents at home who need it. In addition to that, is it challenging? And we found that the coursework here is extremely rigorous and challenging, and it's based in cooperative group skills and solving longer-term projects that involve mathematics. So now I open it up to you guys. If you'd like to ask other questions, details about how the process worked at the middle school, or how we're going to link this to fifth grade or ninth grade, let me know. Thank you.
Do we have any questions or comments?
I have a quick question. So you've been talking about the resources outside of the textbook that help parents and students can go online to supplement their learning, but from my experience with math textbooks, there's a lot of information in a chapter before the homework. Does this book also include a lot of help that...because I know that students could go online, but the reality is that many of them may just use their book and not seek outside help. Is there a resource for them inside the book if that is the situation?
Yes, there is. We're going to provide a textbook to every student plus lots of extras, so that for students who prefer to use the hardbound book at home, they can do that, but a review of the lessons does show that there's a lot of upfront instructional lessons, some kind of homework tips, and helpful things right here in the print if you'd like to look at it.
You can take a look at the textbook.
Yeah. Yes.
Joanna?
There's a page in...at least one page in every chapter that's sort of like a...it's sort of like the highlights. It summarizes sort of what the lesson was about, and it's where...and so the idea is to get away from kids having to just sort of copy notes a lot, you know, that's sort of the traditional way of doing math class. You listen to the teacher, you write a bunch of stuff down, and it just takes everything that the ideal student would have written down during the teacher's lesson and puts it right in one page. I...it's got a name, and it's in a little box, and it's almost...I believe it's in every lesson. We're just...we're in...we're working on chapter eight, so I can really tell you about chapter eight. Thanks.
Any other questions, comments? Now that my microphone...now I have one that's working. Seeing none, we will move on and put this on our consent calendar for our next meeting.
Thank you very much.
Joanna, one more question, one more comment? Oh.
Oh, these are mine, but if you...but I'll look around. Performance task for the garden activity? I can give you that, too.
That brings us to our next item B, which is our facilities bond discussion, and then our chief business official is not with us tonight, Alan Gard, because he has a brand-new daughter at home and dealing with a number of issues, so we wish him well.
Thank you, President Rosenbaum, trustees. Yes, Alan Gard is home with his brand-new baby daughter, Beverly, and his wife and his family, so he's taking care of four children at this moment. But however, he is on standby, should we have any questions for him. Tonight, we have with us Juan Barosa, who is our program manager, and tonight we're going to present on the facilities bond discussion, and then we'll open it up for a board discussion. So tonight's agenda, let's see if we can...can we get this on, or do we need me to...
The dongle.
We need the dongle. While he's...while Jackie and Juan are putting this together. So tonight's agenda is to talk about balancing priorities, as well as reviewing our facilities needs, talking a little bit about the bond program overview, looking at community support, and then, of course, talking about some of the challenges of when to, if we decide to move forward with the bond measure, when to place this on the ballot, and some of the challenges with waiting. And then we're going to talk a little bit about a timeline of a typical election, and then we would also go forward with some recommendations. Now wait till we get the first slide.
I'm not sure this, this is gonna work. Yeah, this doesn't have this kind of connection.
So if you can go to the, Juan, the first slide on balancing priorities, the Venn diagram, please, it's the third slide. So the, the balancing of priorities, when we look at what is needed when considering a, a general obligations bond, is to look at three key components, and, and they can't be looked at in isolation. So the first thing you need is a facilities master plan and an architect, and we do have a facilities master plan that did discuss from, oh, thank you, the various facilities that we do have and what the, the plan included. And this also includes working with our architects, and as you know that we've been working on the San Gabriel site, the Marin Elementary, and Cor-, uh, excuse me, Cor-, not Cornell, pardon me, Ocean View, as well as the San Gabriel site, and, and doing some basic planning on what a school site would look like in terms of renovating and rebuilding. You also need sufficient, sufficient voter support, and for this you need an election consultant. This election consultant is an expert in the area of going out into the public to determine how much a bond would, would go for, what the, what the public of the community would be willing to spend on a bond. You also need a financial advisor to oversee the financial piece in terms of developing a prudent bond program, and as you can tell, look at the, the Venn diagram, you need to have all three working together. And with that, I'm gonna turn this over to Juan, who will take us to the more of the specifics of the facilities needs.
Thank you, Superintendent. Members of the board, good evening, district staff and members of the public. So Alan asked me to talk about some of the facilities needs related to a potential bond, and I think we've had conversations in the past board meetings on some of this, so you may have heard some of this before, but feel free to stop me and ask questions at any point, and I'll do my best to answer those. So I'm gonna go down the list of, of projects that have been discussed. All of these are mentioned in the facilities master plan that was completed last year that has been presented to you. The first project is the Marin Elementary project. Marin Elementary was deemed to be potentially seismically unsafe during a study in 2012. As a result of that, some additional studies were done, plans were prepared and submitted to the Division Estate Architect, that process is underway. Concurrently with that process, the district is beginning the application for the seismic funding portion, which can be significant, that can play out several different ways. I want to point out, those funds at this point aren't guaranteed. We're hoping that we've done everything correctly to get the district in line, to be able to claim those funds when that point comes about. Ocean View Elementary, Elementary School also was deemed to be potentially seismically unsafe, it's gone through the same process, and it's a few months behind the Marin Elementary in terms of the seismic funding portion. The design for that potential project has begun and is underway, it's in the early stages, and that design process is gonna continue through the rest of this year with your input and with the input of a school design committee, and then it's, it's gonna take a pause pending a decision to go or not go for a bond in the future. You, you'll see the, the projected costs of 28 million and 38 million respectively for Marin and Ocean View. Those costs include the hard construction costs, but also all the soft costs that the district would have to pay, which include professional fees, architects, inspectors, studies and so forth, so it's a fully loaded cost. This would be the sum total of all checks the district would write to the different parties involved in the projects.
Juan, does, does that include the temporary placement of students during the project?
Well, the, the interim housing i- is an open question at this point, because that can also take place in a couple of different scenarios. The ideal scenario would be to lease an existing school that becomes available close by. By far, that would be the most cost-effective way to provide interim housing for students. And so I, I believe Alan has had some conversations with some neighboring school districts for that possibility, but it would be either that scenario or having to build a temporary campus, and then the key would be to sequence the project so that, that temporary campus can be used by Marin, then Ocean View, and then Cornell, so that the investment you make in that temporary campus is really providing a return to the district. So, so that's an open question. The next group of projects are, include the San Gabriel site, which is really intended to relieve overcrowding at the middle school, and that project is also underway, the design has just begun. We've had a number of meetings with the school design committee, a number of you participated in some of the earlier programming exercises there, that is moving in a, in a very good direction, and that also would continue through a design phase, which would stop right before the construction documents, again, pending the decision to go for a bond in the future to pay for the project. Albany High School is also facing some overcrowding issues, severe overcrowding issues. This project would provide additional classrooms on the site. This is still very much a concept of a project. Design work has not really begun, it's been discussed, and so this is a budget line item that we've included in the needs list going forward, so this project is a few years out. The project at Albany Middle School would essentially provide an adequate multipurpose room and cafeteria for that campus. During the original construction, because, because of budget overruns, that component was eliminated from the program, and currently that, that's a pressing need, and so that is programmed into the, the project list for a potential bond discussion. Cornell Elementary also facing severe overcrowding, it's a small site, more than 40% of the facilities are temporary facilities. As, as you've heard at previous board meetings, the infrastructure at that school is, is in really deteriorating condition, and this would provide either for a very thorough modernization and new construction, or possibly a complete reconstruction of that school. That decision has not been made, that would be studied over the next year or two, and with your input, a decision would be made on, on which way to go. The last project on this list is the district office, and, and this is one that I believe has been discussed at length, although there's still many options to consider and, and many creative ideas being discussed, but this one may move closer to today based on what plays out with UC Berkeley and, and some of those other issues. And so, so this again is, is a budget item that is included in the project list for a potential bond. If you take those, the cost numbers for all of those projects, it totals $137 million. Not suggesting that would be a bond amount, but if we're looking at, at the, the total of the needs that have been identified, it's a large number. So I'm gonna touch on just a quick overview of, of bond programs. I believe the board has heard information in the past on, on bond programs, so it, it is considered to be the best way to fund facility projects for public schools. The borrowing rates tend to be lower than, than other options. Debt service payments on the borrowed amounts are made by the taxpayers rather than the district's general fund, and with limited resources, by having a bond, that would enable the district to leverage those funds to claim other monies at state programs like the seismic program. In the past, there has been multiple programs, matching programs, it's expected that some of those may come back in some form, pending a statewide facilities bond that could be on, on the ballot next year. In terms of bonds, there, there are essentially two, two forms, the traditional authority, which is called the Proposition 46 Bond, and a Prop 39 Bond. Here's a list of, a comparison of the different aspects of the bonds. The Prop 46 Bond requires a two-thirds approval, so most districts look at that and say, you know, that's a higher hurdle to get over. Prop 39 drops that threshold to 55%, so Prop 39 is, is the more common method to go out for a bond. Prop 46, however, has the, the benefit that it, it really has no limitation on the tax rate that the district can impose on taxpayers. That is something to think about and something that an election consultant in conjunction with the financial advisor would help you to consider, kind of the pros and cons of either the Prop 46 Bond or the Prop 39 Bond.
If I'm, if I may, just, just for a minute, when, when the board has questions around the financial aspect, we do have our financial expert here, Makiko Sato, is also here in case the board has questions on the financial side.
So looking at your current bonding capacity, it's, it's right under $20 million, and that's based on total assessed values of all properties within the school district, taken into consideration existing debt. So you're at about $20 million. Now, a, a bond is a request to the taxpayers for authority to issue debt. That, that request can exceed the 20 million, because it would happen over time. So this $20 million net bonding capacity that's present would increase over time as debt payments are made and assessed property values increase within the district. So that number changes over time. There's also a process in California which is becoming more and more common, which is called a waiver, where the state would allow a district to exceed this bonding capacity. That's something that the financial advisor would help you to think through as you move forward in, in the bond process, but it has become more common in the last few years This table shows tax rates within the different school districts in the Contra Costa and Alameda Counties, and it does show that Albany Unified is, you know, in the higher category of, of tax rates based on property values. This is one way to look at the data. Now, looking at the same data in, in a different way, this shows the assessed value per student in the district. I think what this points out is that for the area covered by the Albany School District, there's a lot of kids, and if, if you were to look at the ability to raise funds to improve facilities per student, you're among the lowest. So, so there's a little bit of a disparity there when compared to other similar districts, again, within Contra Costa and Alameda Counties. So, so there's different ways of, of looking at the same data.
Excuse me, just a minute, Juan, I, I think we might have to just stop a minute on this one. I think I want to just offer my, my interpretation of what you've just said is that we actually have a relatively limited tax base because of the kind of community we are, therefore we're at the bottom of that chart, and for the same reason, we're at the upper end of the previous chart. Is that a correct interpretation?
That's correct, that's correct, and some communities have more industrial property, which are also taxpayers that don't generate students.
Right.
And so you're just in, you're a small community that has a lot of students.
Without a commercial industrial tax base.
And without Chevron.
Yeah. Okay.
So now, looking at the next question, that would be, you know, what is a community willing to support? And that's sort of the question that, the district is sort of at that point where now, I think we're starting to ask that question, and as Superintendent mentioned, I think having an elections consultant is gonna be really helpful in analyzing that question. I think we could all come up with, with responses to some of these questions here. You know, what types of projects the voters are gonna be willing to support, what bond amount is gonna be palatable, how are they gonna look at the tax rate impact, and, and when does the election make sense to voters? The election consultant would facilitate the community input on those questions and really reach out through surveys and polls so that the board can reach an informed decision with that community input, and not, you know, any person in the, in the district really putting forth recommendations without that input. Now, there are some downsides to, to waiting on the decision to engage a, an elections consultant or to go forward with a bond. First one on this list is the safety factor of the two schools which have been deemed seismically unsafe. So the report indicated that they're not likely to collapse, they, they wouldn't fall over, but they would suffer significant damage and likely be red-tagged, so students from both of those schools would have to be relocated, which would be quite an undertaking. Alan and I looked at some numbers for temporary housing in that scenario, and for Marin, to have to set up temporary housing, you know, in, in short order, would be about six and a half million, Ocean View, a little over eight, based on the enrollment differences at those schools. And the, the real issue, I think, in Albany would be, where do you put them? I, I think the real estate in Albany is gonna be a real challenge. And of course, the, the growth, the enrollment growth and the projected growth within the city of Albany, that's really the, the one issue that, in my mind, isn't, isn't debatable. I, I think you're dealing with that now, and that's gonna continue to, to become a, a greater issue. The third item here is the cost escalation factor. Escalation in the construction industry in the last year has, has increased, and it is projected to stay at a high level for four to five years. So if you were to take the group of projects that totaled $137 million, the impact of escalation of moving that back one year is about $7 million, and that compounds annually, so it, it's a significant impact, and it is a very active construction market, so another factor to think about.
So when we're looking at a timeline, and this next slide talks about some current options that we would have for a typical election, should we have a June 7th ballot or a November 8th, 2016 ballot? And as you can see, if you map it backwards, if we were to place a bond on the June 7th, 2016 ballot, we would need to start immediately to identify our needs. If we placed a ballot on the November 8th, 2016 ballot, we would have a little bit more time, we could start identifying needs in, in February of 2016. We would need to form a committee, much like we did with the partial tax committee, we would have a bond committee, and then we would need to have the survey consultant go onto the community and to start collecting the data. And part of this, having a, a consultant work with us, is to also help have the public talk to us a little more about where we would prioritize, what is it that the community would bear, what is it the community would like to fund in terms of a bond, and then we'd have to have an information campaign, solicit input from stakeholders, and of course, develop the proposal for the ballot measure. So then, of course, there's a district approval process for the election campaign, and then having the election day. At this juncture, because of the needs that we have, we would like to maybe wait a little bit on finding or working on. bit on finding or working on the real specifics of the plan and of the bond until we can have an election consultant. The election consultant will help us find that missing piece of the puzzle. They'll be able to look at the optimal use of our district facilities. We also need to have that. Placement of long-term, we have a district office property we need to find. We do need to look at the Solano property. We need to look at our maintenance yard. And, yes.
Could I just get clarification on that?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I do understand that you need an election consultant, but it seems like the expertise that would be needed for this other element, although certainly the election consultant would need to integrate that, would not be his or her necessarily expertise.
This would be something in addition to.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that there was that clarification.
Yes. I believe the election consultant specifically deals with the bond election. The assessment would be an additional company that we would need to work with.
Right.
Are you thinking of moving ahead then on the election consultant?
What I would recommend is that the board give staff direction to seek out an election consultant, and then Alan would work with Juan in going through the process of going through the bidding process, much like we did with the consultant for the parcel tax. I believe this is a good first step. I think that the election consultant will be able to work simultaneously with our financial advisor, with our program manager, as well as our architects, and to come up with what is it that we need in terms of a bond election. And we'll help put some of those pieces of the puzzle together, and then we can bring back a proposal to the board with a lot more information.
Charlie?
So, thank you, everyone, for bringing us this information. It's very helpful, and we have a lot to think about here. I guess I'd like to endorse the staff recommendations, and I would like to add that, in my mind, the kind of sequence that I think would be most helpful to us would be one in which, number one, we start with some community engagement. I think earlier this evening, when we were talking about Common Core and communication, one of the elements of feedback we had was that we could do a better job communicating with parents. And I think that probably is true also for our facilities issues. We need to really engage the community around the master plan, and I think that will help us in terms of sorting out priorities. Priorities is, setting priorities is my number two. Clearly, the price tag is not something where we can just sweep in there and do everything. And I think we need to think pretty carefully about the sequence in which we do some of these projects. There's a number of, there's a couple of different constraints. The bonding capacity is one, and then the limits on what we can actually put out there in terms of dollars per assessed value. They both kind of point us towards something in the 30 million-something range, you know? And we'd really have to think pretty carefully about, is that something that we want to try to? It's a budget, you know? At some point, we have a budget that we have to live within. So, we need to really think about setting priorities here. The part of that, though, that I think is also on this slide is the optimal use of district facilities. And I think we really need to kind of get clear on where we're going to put the district office and how are we going to use our different properties. And I'm wondering, though, two weeks ago, you and I went to the Strategic Assets Workshop, and we heard a really good presentation by somebody who does this kind of assessment for districts, for school districts. This would not be an election consultant. This would be a property management consultant. Admittedly, the projects that they were talking about were in school districts that had more land available, you know? And so, there were options in terms of, you know, if you sell this property that you're not using and you buy something over here where you have, you know? So, we don't have that situation. But I'm wondering if maybe bringing somebody like that in sooner might be beneficial to us. And so, I thought I'd just ask your thoughts on that.
Yes. I think this is the assessment of the optimal use, excuse me, optimal use of our district facilities. When we went to the training, one of the things that was an aha moment for me was that you can't just take a piece of property and sell it to a property developer. There's law around who you have to offer first, second, third, before you can sell to a developer. So, it was a very good training. And I do agree, we need to hire somebody to come in and look at our properties in terms of the assessment. I want to add something that you said earlier, and I want to echo what you said about community engagement. This is not the only bond discussion we're going to have. You know, to do a bond, it takes more or less a year, and you need multiple detailed analyses. You've got to have multiple stakeholder input sessions, multiple board meetings. This is not something that is going to be decided in one or two or three board meetings. We need community input. So, having the election consultant will help us through that process, having Juan with us, having our financial consultant, and having the person that's going to help us with assessing what, maximizing the use of our district properties. It will be a team effort. My goal is to bring as much information to the board as possible so that we can make an informed decision.
Paul?
Thanks, Charlie. Those are all very good points. I agree with everything you said. Community engagement, of course, is always a big issue, and that's something that the election consultant would help us with. When we talk about priorities, we need to go back and look at the facilities master plan because that is where we set priorities, and the board agreed on the plan, I think, just last year. So, if we're going to change any of those priorities, that means going back and rethinking the facilities master plan. Maybe we need to do that, but I don't want to just assume we're going to do that because we spend a lot of time and work in creating it. One of the things that came up while we were doing the facilities master plan, and I think this is important to keep in mind, was the architects, WLC, while they worked on it with us, they kept reminding us, this is best-of-all-possible-worlds wishlist. We shouldn't expect ever to finish everything in that plan. And when we look at this $137 million price tag and $20 million bonding capacity, I think we can understand why we're never going to get to the end of that facilities master plan. So, that's just something we all need to be realistic about and keep in mind all the way through. The question of the property management consultant was on the agenda once before we actually had a proposed contract, and the board was skeptical at that time whether we needed to hire a person to tell us what we could do with our property. I'm getting the feeling from the general conversation that we're tending more towards believing maybe we do need to spend that money. But the property management consultant and the election consultant cost money, which I assume will come out of the general fund.
Yes.
So, we do need to, you know, keep an eye on that, too. So, I think, you know, as Superintendent said, this is just the first of many discussions we'll have. And I'm not sure. I think maybe the first step is looking for an election consultant, but maybe the property management consultant comes shortly after that. Maybe they need to work together. I'm not sure about that.
I'm actually going to ask Juan if you'd like to share your thoughts on that. You have much more experience than I do in the timing of hiring.
Sure. Well, I think what will happen is that your elections consultant in reaching out to the community is going to start to set parameters for what's possible within a bond program. And so, the rest of the team will end up following those parameters, including our work, the architects, the financial consultant, and even the property consultant. Because if, this program has to be palatable and approved by the community. And so, in my experience, I believe you start there. And as those parameters are set based on community input, then the property consultant knows his marching orders, architects, financial consultants, and so forth.
No, I, first of all, thank you very much for your very clear explanation of a very
complicated project. And I also would like to indicate that I am very much in agreement, as the other board members did, about the recommendations. But I have been thinking a lot about the order of these, of the recommendations. And I like to play devil's advocate. So, I just want to think this out a little bit. You know, we are a very small district, and we don't have a lot of extra property, which we're just throwing around and all that. As has already been mentioned, we have, we're a very dense community. We have a very limited amount of land, and we live in a community in which people live so close together, they may have very strong opinions about particular uses of land, or they, and they may be based on their own interests or what they think is right for their children, and they may not necessarily have the expertise. One of the things that, I'm always for community engagement, but I am wondering if in this situation, a little bit of information for them about the most valuable return on investment in the use of the land would be helpful early on. You know, I think about that also in part because there's all kinds of other things having to do with city planning, high-density buildings, all this sort of thing that not everyone may completely understand. But, and so, that's my only, so, in general, I'm in complete agreement, and I think that this is a very good idea. But I am, first, I would want to know that the election consultant understood our particular community and context. Then, they might say right away, well, we should get some initial information about the real estate out there, or we might not. The second thing I would very much want to see, so I would want to know that they had experience and expertise in a community like ours, with, which is very dense, very compact, very high-priced real estate with, you know, very close together. The second thing is, for the property management or assets, I would want the same thing. I would want to see that they had experience in, with districts with very high-density situations, a very involved community with a lot of that. So, that's my only slightly micromanaging thinking. Now, again, I'm just playing devil's advocate at this point. Okay, I'm just thinking out loud a little bit.
Actually, I think that it is, it would be very easy, relatively easy for us, when we put out the bid for an election consultant, to be very specific about saying, we are looking for someone who has not only the experience, but a good track record with, working with small urban districts with the kind of demographics and bonding capacity that we have. And Juan, help me out here. I do believe that once we have the election consultant, that consultant comes here and talks to the board about what you're looking for. So, it's a real flow of information sharing, and we have five experts here in the community sitting on this dais who could share with the election consultant. I would say the same thing. We could go back and revisit for the property manager to look at what we had put out in terms of the bid and the contract that we had, and go back and double-check and make sure they have this kind of experience. I believe we could do that.
I mean, that would be fine. And I have great respect for my fellow board members and great respect for the staff members, but I really feel this is very, I mean, the real estate in this area, and thus, the real estate in the district is one of our most valuable assets. And we need to be able to tell the public that we have really thought about and used experts who really understand how best to maximize the use of that extremely important and very limited asset. So, that's what I would want to see.
And the consultant would need to understand that that asset is there because of the schools, and it's interrelated. Charlie, and then I have a suggestion.
So, I don't quite remember. I know you talked about the property management consultant before I joined the board, and my recollection of your discussion, watching you from out there, was that you didn't feel that the particular proposal that you got brought enough value to the table to justify the expense. So, I don't want to, you know, I just wanted to recognize that and recognize that that could still be the case with any property management consultant. I'm thinking that, at this point, maybe such a consultant could help address some questions, or maybe we just need to wrestle with them. But the questions, in my mind, are, you know, I think the facilities master plan has a sequence of projects, and it's fine, you know? But my recollection is that, as you indicated, it's kind of a wishlist. It's not really constrained by budget. And so, the question in my mind is, if you only have $20 million, what's the right sequence? If you have $35 million, is a different sequence the sequence that you want? What about the district office? You know, I forget where it is in the sequence, but it's starting to look like a real need at this point. Does it get bumped ahead? Those are the kinds of questions I think we need to wrestle with, and whether a property management consultant is the person to help us with that part or not, I'm not really sure. But that's kind of what I, I think we need to focus some attention on.
Russ?
Well, I think...
Robert, Russ?
Yeah, so, I'm the newbie to the board and have prior service, so, a lot of these issues are new. And I'm really struck by, say, our actual bonding capacity and $137 million wishlist. And I really, and to go back to the master plan, it may not be a reordering of the master plan, and I'm not saying throw out the master plan, but if someone said, you're only going to get maximum 30 million, and I read those reports, and if I believe that the Hayward Fall earthquake is going to take down Ocean View and Marin if we don't do something, I put the repairs in. So, I cut the cost a lot. I only get the schools I have, alas. Or I say, look, the threat of an earthquake disrupting the district is such, we have to address it, but let's figure out the various ways we could. You know, do you invest in new property that isn't going to fall down? And, you know, we would really be in trouble if the earthquake strikes and Albany High has to get remediated to the tune of 20 million. Because, yes, it's better shape for earthquake, but earthquake. So, I also, also, I think, there's an awful lot of sort of hill climbing. We have this thing, we could add a little more and make it better, that maybe we should make the difference. But I'm not sure that means knocking down one of the schools that hasn't yet fallen down. And then, the bus is really moving. I didn't go to a, an Ocean View site, planning meeting last week for landscaping. Landscaping. You know, so, we know it's behind Marin in the schedule, and if Marin is pending a bond issue in then some years, you know, I think we'll still have trees in 10 years, we'll have shrubs in 10 years, but I can't imagine why we're focused that in the micro details when there's bigger issues more.
So, I'm a little confused. The bond is just one source of funding. There's the seismic mitigation money, or is that gone?
So, no, right now, when it, I think Juan's going to help me out here.
The emergency.
For Marin, we've put in all of the paperwork. It's passed through DSA, and now, we're waiting for whether we would get the seismic mitigation money, and of course, the hardship money. So, the bond would supplement that, and then, so, there's that sort of like the line. And Charlie, we went to this training, they talked about, there's sort of this line that you get in, kind of making this sort of like the Reader's Digest version here, okay? So, you get in line for the seismic mitigation hardship money. Marin is in that queue. Ocean View, if we were to do that piece, we would be pretty far back in the queue, and that is a much more nebulous possibility for us to get that kind of money. And you're nodding, thank you. So, yes, there's multiple funding sources for Marin, and maybe on the outset potentially for Ocean View. It all depends also on what's going to happen, what the governor's going to do in terms of, you know, state facilities bond, or if he's going to earmark money and allow school districts to make the decision on what they want to do.
Ross's comment, I believe, you didn't get a chance to answer it. If I understand it, is, you know, why would we want to look at new buildings rather than fixing our old ones? rather than fixing our old ones?
Do you want, would you like to help me with that, or let me take a stab at it?
All yours.
I could help with it.
Okay.
I came also.
Okay, a little bit of background. The seismic mitigation money and what do we call the other, the hardship?
Hardship.
Hardship money are constructed in such a way that if the cost of retrofit is more than half the cost of replacement, they won't pay for the retrofit. They want you to do a replacement. So we went, at least for Marin, directly to the replacement based on the estimates we had for the retrofit. For Ocean View, it was the same situation, but it was a little bit closer. Depending on how you did the retrofit, you might be able to do it for half, half the cost. But there's another complication on there that we need to keep in mind, which is that all of these funds will pay for only current capacity and the square footage that the state thinks you need for current capacity, both of which are less than we really need, which is why the high school and the middle school were both too small the day they were finished because of the way they were financed and the state wouldn't pay for anything more than that. So we're hoping to construct the projects in such a way that we could get the maximum amount of funding and then add something on. But it, it's all pretty complicated. It's pretty much, I think, all in the facilities master plan, but you need to keep those things in mind when you're looking at these different costs.
You know, and we've had numerous discussions then. Pat, go on, I'm sorry.
And just, I think you might have started to be on the board when this factor was also a consideration for Ocean View. And that is, it's not just that it would cost, that we would only get this certain amount of money to rebuild the whole thing. It was decided in the process of the community engagement with Ocean View that they actually like the basic structure and that they knew that what they would get the money for would result in something that they, that they liked less, like that was possibly smaller and, and that didn't meet their needs as well. So that was also part of the consideration for sort of presenting that, that, that project as, as it was, as not, as a retrofit rather than as a complete rebuild.
Charlie, and then we need to sort of move on.
So my understanding is that if we use local bond monies, we can do what we want. So the constraints that Paul's described apply to Marin because that's where we applied for state monies.
Right.
But if we're not going for state monies for Ocean View or some other projects, those constraints don't apply.
That's right.
So.
But of course, how much money we can get is still a constraint.
Yeah, and that's where I think we need to do some serious thinking because if indeed, just to pick a number, we can put out a bond for 35 million, that might affect which direction we go with Ocean View. So.
That's right.
We, we have to think about all of that.
Depending on, on the facilities master plan priorities.
And whether we want to do any other projects, you know, so these are all important considerations.
And these are future discussions that we're going, we have to have. But tonight, we have to decide whether we want to give direction to the, to the district or not.
So my, I think my one observation is I don't think that June 2016 is a realistic timeline.
I agree.
I think we should just start thinking about November 2016.
I agree.
But I'm very supportive of letting staff bring us whatever proposal you want to bring in terms of getting some more expertise. It's clear we need some more expertise.
I can also, we can revise the bid for the, the real estate consultant to make sure that the, that it's more clear and to make sure that we ensure sufficient value before it's brought to the board, you know, the second time around.
And tell me again, I think we will learn more about what monies we're getting from the state by fall for Marin, is that right? We'll, we'll find out something by?
I'm, I'm hoping that by July, somewhere in July, right, we'll be able to, to have much more information.
Right.
And then what about this whole, I'm asking a really silly question, this whole facilities, bonds, state possibility, is that just a completely nebulous, we just wait and see?
That, that would be a guess at this point, but, but at some point, I believe California will have another large statewide facilities bond that would essentially match your dollars for specific projects in the future.
But we just, there's no discussion currently in Sacramento?
There's a big discussion currently in, in Sacramento and.
But with no date on it.
Well, the date would be November of 16.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay, just one very brief comment. I agree with Charlie that June is probably very ambitious, but that is one of the things that the, that the election consultant looks at is what are our best chances
Sure.
of passing it. It depends somewhat on which election it's in. So I'd just like to keep my mind open on that one.
Because November 16 is going to be a big election and there'll be a school board election as well as a national election. I would propose then, I'll ask for your, everybody's opinion, that we give the go-ahead to the district and to Val to, to move ahead on looking for an election consultant. Given the constraints, I don't think it was far-fetched at all that, that Pat was talking about. And a property manager as well. Or one or the other or both.
Well, I, I think the election consultant definitely and to refine the the bid for the property manager so that the board can decide whether we want to proceed with that.
I'm good with that.
You're good with that?
Okay, so we'll refine the bid and then I'll have Alan bring it back to the board and make sure that it has the pieces that the board would like us to have in it.
Jackie, we had a unanimous.
I got that.
It's going now.
It's Mr. Barosa, right?
Yes.
Mr. Barosa, you've had to sit there so many times over the period and I was so glad to hear this presentation because it was extraordinarily clear.
Thank you.
Really made these very complicated issues, you know, good for the public and good for us. So thank you very much for your service.
And thank.
You're very welcome, but I have to say, Alan put the presentation together. I'm just filling his big shoes today.
Thank you very much. Very.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have some direction. Thank you. That brings us to item C, facility master, master plan discussion, which I think we sort of covered some already.
We did. And this is, the board wanted to have a facilities master plan continuation of the discussion, so we've agendized this and at the March 25th board meeting, WLC Architects provided the overview of the facilities master plan that outlined the various needs throughout the district. And so we're opening this back up to the board for discussion on.
Any more input?
I think, I think the board wanted to have more input and wanted to have more discussion around the actual plan itself. And, and I agree with President Rosenbaum, this, we sort of started this discussion in the previous agenda item.
Well, what I remember is that Board Member Blanchard had mentioned, and then you should each speak for yourself, that he had mentioned the idea that, that, you know, we had really needed to take into consideration the, what to do with the location of the district office and possibly the location of Solano Avenue. But then their recommendation actually pointed out three particular areas. The district office, the maintenance yard and what was the, and the Solano property. So they did take that into consideration. But then I remember Board Member Black had very politely said, well, we had this list of priorities that had already been created in the, and I went back to look at it and I don't remember seeing anything specific about the Solano property in that list of priorities, although I read it very quickly.
No, I don't think that was included in the facilities master plan.
Right. So what, I guess what I'm saying is you were both right. Okay. So, so, I mean, I think it was a good idea to include these extras and then when you look at that list of priorities, these are not in it. So. Are we going to have a discussion about?
Because that came up after the facilities master plan was complete.
And I actually have the facilities master planner for my computer. I'm looking at the table of contents and you are correct. It says the analysis and site master plan covers Albany Children's Center, Ocean View, Marin, Cornell, Albany Middle, Albany High, McGregor High School site, just San Gabriel site, the district office, and they called it the San Gabriel Annex. So the Solano property does not appear to be in the facilities master plan that I, that I can see.
And the, is the maintenance yard mentioned?
Cornell.
No, I don't think we talked about it.
Maintenance facility, yes. So that's the last one.
Oh, it's at the bottom of the list of priorities?
In the table of contents.
Because I don't have it in front of me.
Albany Children's Center, Cornell, Marin, Ocean View, Albany Middle School, High School, McGregor and Maintenance Facility.
Okay, so it is, it is in there.
How much time do we have?
Yeah, really.
President Rosenbaum, how much time do we have for this discussion?
We have 20 minutes.
Well, it's 20 minutes, but I think we might want to cut it down because we might have a longer discussion on one of the next items, but.
Of facilities assessment? Because we can always continue this discussion later.
You know, what I think I'd, I'd like to do is just ask Val if you have any other thoughts regarding the district office. I mean, I think it's important for us to acknowledge that UC would like us to leave at some point. And we need a place to leave too.
So UC has been very generous in, you know, extending our lease at the discounted rate this year. Should we have to stay beyond that, there would be a significant increase in the rental of the property. And UC Berkeley.
So we have it for 2015-16?
That is correct. The lease would end on June 30th, 2016. So when you think about where we could potentially put the district office, we would either have to look at our Solano property as a potential property to put the district office. And then we would, if, if you look at that concept, and I'm, I'm speaking conceptually, we would need to build up. And the space that we would need for the district office would mean probably a three-story building. The impact on, and we haven't really asked the community yet with the impact or asked the city much about the impact. In terms of parking, you would have about 25, 26 district office employees that would need to, to find parking. Another option that we could explore, and I'm speaking again conceptually, is that we could look at one of our current schools and find a way that we could put the district office on a second floor. So again, just speaking hypothetically, currently the Ocean View build-out plan has rebuilding of Ocean View and a parking where we have staff and parent parking along that strip by, where there's like the, where the creek runs by. So a potential idea, and I hate to say it, I know I call these my harebrained schemes, would be potentially to build a covered parking structure so that the staff of, of Ocean View and the parents could park on the, on the ground. And then the district office would be on top of that. That would give us enough square footage to put a district office. The benefits of having the district office on a school site would be, I mean, several. We could have a mentorship program for district office staff to work with students. We're close by. If it's on the Ocean View property, it allows the University Village residents, many who do not drive. They, they walk, they push their strollers, they take the bus. It would still allow walking access and since we have centralized enrollment, it would allow the University Village families to have access to us. And these are families traditionally who don't drive.
This was a solution, now it's way down the road.
Oh, it's, this is, I'm talking hypothetical, just, it was, you know, and it was a conceptual idea that I, I discussed with the architects as a, as a possibility.
But September, or next June?
So, yeah, I mean, if, if.
Could you use the mic?
If breaking ground on anything new is pending a bond, would I be surprised to find the district offices sitting in portables on the San Gabriel site in two years? I mean, it's underutilized now, it's flat. And that raises a second question. We, we're a district awash in portables. Do we own these? Do we rent these? Is it a mix?
These are leased portables. To place portables right now on the San Gabriel site, right now, remember, we have the portables at the middle school and the faculty is using the San Gabriel site to park cars. And so if we were to place portables for the district office on the San Gabriel site, and I don't have Alan here to speak to this, but I would suspect we'd have to do some paving because only part of that is, is paved and that right now that's where cars are. The other pieces that we'd have to consider is the neighbors in the San Gabriel area have been very, very vocal and have made it clear that to have 25 more cars in that neighborhood already in an impactful area would be detrimental to the neighborhood. So there, there's strong community concern around placing the district office there. I want to add one more piece. UC Berkeley would like us to make progress towards finding a permanent district office site. I believe that as we move for a bond and as we start to make plans for where we would like our district office, we would be showing a good faith effort to UC Berkeley that we are, we are trying to, to move off of, of that site. This was only supposed to be a five-year plan to have the district office there and we have obviously exceeded that.
May I, may I suggest, first of all, I, I like harebrained ideas. I like the sensitivity to the Ocean View demographics. And in explaining to UC, as you begin to tell them that you are making this good faith effort, if you want to hypo, you know, talk about this hypothetical plan, which actually is of great benefit to their student population, I wonder if they might like to think about the possibility of somehow, I mean, they're going to be doing some building, I'm sure, and wanting to use those sites for different things, but of trying to combine resources. I mean, if they're going to try to create a community garden, there's been a lot of talk about that. And the district office is going to be down there, you know, could there be some use of Ocean View? Anyway, I would like, in showing our gratitude and showing a good faith effort, I think it would be really wonderful to, to say that, you know, we're trying to serve your student population to the best of our ability. And we try to cooperate and coordinate some of our resources to benefit our students.
It would be great if they could throw in some resources, especially considering they do not pay any property tax.
I didn't say that. I was trying to be very.
No, it's true.
But Paul did say it.
I did say it and, and, you know, everybody knows it. On the other hand, you know, they are impacted financially also. They, they don't have extra money. But if there was any way the, this, UC or the state through UC could help in that, with that in mind, that it's their students that we're looking out for and, you know, part of our problem with bonding capacity is a large piece of Albany is Albany Village and we have no bonding capacity or property tax out of UC Village.
I mean, it did come up in our two plus two, two by two by two meeting on Monday briefly in that the university is, the folks here are under real huge pressure to maximize the financial return on their properties. So I think some of the folks who could make decisions are between a rock and a hard place.
We could put the district office in the sprouts.
Well, that's an interesting idea. Well, I have two more harebrained, harebrained schemes just to throw out here. But mostly what I want to do is encourage us to think about talking with our potential partners, the City of Albany and UC Berkeley, to help us with some of our space and facilities issues. One way I could see talking to UC Berkeley is the possibility that there might be space available for a temporary campus. Should it come to that? That's, that's a place where there is some land and should we get to that point, maybe we could have that conversation. Could that be home to a temporary campus for a year? So just like I said, these are harebrained schemes, but I'm just going to throw that one out there. The other one would be that I would encourage us to talk more with the city about possible joint use of the Veterans Memorial Building. And you may have already pursued this conversation, but that has the potential for at least a temporary school district use. I, I realize it needs $8 million of seismic upgrades. However, it, 8 million is not as much as 137 million.
Good point.
I just passed Val on. I just passed Val on, I know it's saying Veterans.
What I do know is the, the City of Albany owns the land upon which the Veterans Building is, and the Veterans Building is owned by the county. So, some of the conversations that Iran and I have had, just again, conceptually, talking about, how could we work in partnership with the city to preserve the history and the legacy of the Veterans Memorial Building, and at the same time, be able to maximize the use of that for, for the school district or, you know? We have some performances there, beautiful, wonderful performances there. When you look at the Solano site, if we were to consider building upon that site or rebuilding it and doing the multiple levels, right now, we have the YMCA that resides there. I've considered even maybe reaching out to the YMCA and seeing if they wanted to go into partnership with us to rebuild that, where if we had a three-story building, they would have maybe the bottom floor, the district offices would be on the second and third floor. And there's several options that we could, and I haven't even broached the conversation with them, but just thinking about, how do we keep our partnership with the YMCA? They provide such a valuable, valuable service to our students after school, before school, and to our families. And so, I don't want to displace them, build a district office there, and then they have nowhere to go. There might be some real partnership opportunities here.
So, the question is, how do we move forward?
Well, I think the first step in terms of, you know, having the election consultant and having the person who's going to be looking at the property management will give us a little bit more information. I think we'll be able to bring it back. We'll continue conversations with UC Berkeley. Again, I think that having UC Berkeley, letting them know that we are really trying to make strides to finding a permanent district office. Unless there is a landowner that has unused property that they would like to maybe use a tax break and rent their facilities to us for a dollar a year, that would be wonderful, too.
I noticed the old little Alaska bar is empty.
Where's that?
It's on San Pablo.
There is some undeveloped land on Albany Hill, but I think it's more vertical than horizontal.
Yeah. We were looking at a piece of property near the target, but that was leased to what's now a very beautiful tile company.
Yeah. So, this is, I guess, to be continued as we get more information?
Yeah, I think so. And just, again, with the encouragement to have those conversations with our potential collaborators.
Absolutely.
Excellent idea.
Absolutely. Okay, I think we are ready to move on, if I can find my notes. Mr. Barker just walked in, so we'll go to review in action. Approve tentative agreement with Albany Teachers Association.
Is this a hearing, or is this a...
This is, we have to open the public hearing.
Yeah, we have to have a public hearing, because the public needs to be advised of all the...
That is correct. And I'm very excited to bring this agenda item to the board and to the public. And Cynthia Teia, our Director of Human Resources, is here for this item, which is to approve the tentative agreement between the Albany Teachers Association and the Albany Unified School District. And it's my understanding that the Albany Teachers Association has actually ratified the tentative agreement. So, with that, if we want to open the public hearing?
So, the public hearing is now open. Any public comment, questions?
Come on.
Yes, so we will close the public hearing, and we will discuss the tentative agreement.
Miss Teia, would you like to come forward and share?
Or the ratified agreement, I'm sorry.
Ratification of the tentative agreement.
The teachers' union and the district met several times through the course of this past year to come to an agreement on whether or not there were any available funds for a raise. And after several meetings, we did go back and forth a little bit, but we did come to an agreement and proposed a 3% increase to all the salary schedule retro to July 1st, 2014, also with the acknowledgement that the district has paid for a health and welfare increase of, I think it's 1.54%, 1.56, 1.56%, sorry. And we came to an agreement. Lauren Barker, the chair, and I signed off on the tentative agreement, which he took to vote last week, and it has been ratified. So, we are bringing it here to you.
So, excellent work on both sides, and I think that the process moved forward in a very open way, and just would congratulate everyone who was involved. Board comments?
So, I also wanted to thank everybody who was involved, and it's a real pleasure to be able to say thank you to staff in this way, and to provide at least some compensation increase that recognizes the really good work that we had such a fine example of earlier this evening.
Absolutely.
Yeah, echo what Charlie said. And, you know, I'd like, I've said this before, if we had unlimited funds, we would pay the teachers a whole lot more than we do there. Definitely do a very important job, and they're well worth every penny we can afford. I wish we could afford more, but I think we've come to a good agreement, based on what we have.
Mr. Barker, would you like to make some comments? Or would you like us to vote first?
Just in case.
Well, I move that we approve the salary and agreement with the teachers.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Oh, and I have to sign it. I haven't signed it yet.
My name is Lauren Barker. I am the Chair of the Albany Teachers Association Negotiating Team, and I wanted to come here to thank you for fair and reasonable settlement. And we appreciate the support of the school board and the Albany community in these salary increases. The last two years of salary increases have helped regain some of the lost buying power of the last 10 years that I know many people, not just teachers, but many people have experienced. And so, we do appreciate, though, that the board is making a good faith effort to be open with us and do what they can for us. I would also like to say that we are already preparing for the next round negotiations, and we have, I believe, come to an agreement to Sunshine for the next round by June 9th. And just like to ask the board, it means we probably won't be able to negotiate seriously until later, and probably even next fall again, but I know the board is doing their budgeting work beforehand, and so I would just like to ask the board to please remember the teachers and the secretaries and the aides who run the programs that really make Albany schools great. And just, you know, I know that, I know you probably are already aware of this, and I know that you're very cognizant of our situation, but the teachers here really work hard, they're really dedicated, they really want to do the best they can for kids, and it's a lot easier to do that if you're not worried about your financial picture for your family, or if you're not worried about your health benefits for your family and things. And so, I think you all understand that, and just want to make sure that as you're planning your budgeting, that you think about that, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. That brings us to item B, approve the contract with Heavenly Construction, doing businesses Heavenly Greens turf installation for Albany Aquatic Center.
Thank you, President Rosenbaum, trustees. The Albany Aquatic Center has been in operation for about three years, and staff has recognized a need to address an issue with the current primrose garden area. The primrose garden has a lot of thorns, and what's happening at this point is that trash that either gets blown in or cast aside goes into the roses, gets caught in the thorns, and it's very difficult for staff to remove it. I also believe that there's some issues where students are either playing, and they get poked, and then they go into the aquatic center because they have, you know, thorns and punctures. So, staff has been looking at a way to mitigate that issue, but also to simultaneous look at the issue around water conservation. And so, they believe that if we have landscaping that is used with artificial turf, I think in this case it's Heavenly Greens, to replace that with a higher-grade artificial turf, that we'd be able to save some, save some water, and there's some energy efficiency. So, some of the questions were, you know, how does the turf look? And I know that Alan and Amanda and Don looked at the different levels of artificial turf. There's high grade, there's medium grade, and there's low grade. The turf is non-allergenic. It is designed to be walked and played on. You can, you can wash it down. There is, I'm sure over the years, there is some wear on it, but the recommendation is to go with the artificial turf with Heavenly Greens. And the cost for this would be about $30,000.
So, I know we have a number of questions on the board, so where should we start?
Well, didn't I have the basic question, which is, look, I didn't even know exactly where the primrose garden was, so I couldn't, for $30,000, where is the turf going to be?
And I have, I believe, there is a picture that Alan sent to me. Can you pull it up, please? While she's, while she's pulling it up, one of the benefits is that it improves stormwater management, conserves water, and is 100% recyclable. So, this does coincide with the energy efficiency of the Albany Aquatic Center. So, where you see the Xs are the places where there would be, if you can...
The indoor? So, it's the borderline?
But also those three beds right there.
And the three boxes down at the bottom, that's correct.
And one behind the outside pool. Okay. I'll give you the floor first.
Well, I guess part of my job is to be honest, and I have to say that I'm really unhappy with this proposal. This is not something I would do in my own yard. I can't imagine spending $30,000 to rip out the shrubbery in my front yard and replace it with artificial turf. I just, it wouldn't, it just wouldn't be something I would do. You know, earlier, we had a lovely presentation about gardens. Two weeks ago, we heard about Cornell's gardening project. I don't think there's really been a very careful investigation of alternatives such as low-water, low-maintenance plants.
Oh, native plants?
Yeah, native plants. This seems like a rather expensive solution, which really is flying in the face of the design direction that I think is prevalent in Albany. This was, this bothered me enough that I made three visits to the site.
Oh, good.
I looked at it, I took measurements. The primrose beds are 13 feet by 24 feet. They are separated by eight-foot-wide sidewalks. I think there are different ways to accomplish what staff would like to accomplish. This doesn't seem to me to really be a proposal, well, let's put it this way, this would be something that would benefit by a design professional bringing us a solution if there's a problem. And I have to say that the original concept in the pool, and I know that two people who were on the bond advisory committee brought this up at that discussion, the original concept was that we had a large building and a lot of concrete in a small space, and we needed to soften the hardscape with vegetation. So, the vegetation was actually an integral part of the design of the pool. Now, I don't know how we got primroses there. They're actually quite lovely. They're in full bloom, and they're really quite lovely.
Are they native plants?
I don't know what they are, but they had a real nice splash of color. But the original design was trees. Those were to be trees in those locations. And, you know, I, I'm not a design professional, but I could imagine a lot of solutions that don't involve artificial turf. It could be trees, it could be, I'm not sure what, you know, it could be low-water plants. You know, I appreciate that staff wants to create a welcoming atmosphere and maybe put tables out. There's room on the eight-foot sidewalks between the flower beds. Frankly, if I were, if I were wanting to sit out there, I'd rather sit at a table with flower beds on each side of me than to sit at a table, sitting on artificial turf with concrete on either side of me. So, it just seems really a strange kind of proposal that kind of flies in the face of all the design work that we had around the pool originally. It flies in the face of the gardening proposals that we've had, and I'm not sure it's the best use of $30,000. $30,000, there are other needs, you know? We've, we skimped on the pool. We never got the mechanical equipment covered with a, with an awning, so it's exposed to the elements. There's, there's other things I'd rather see done with serious money. So, you know, if other people are okay with it, that'll be fine, but I, just given the information I've had, I don't think I would support it.
You know, I, I would like to, our students walk past that a lot. So, I would like maybe to ask the two of you if you have any thoughts on what that would look like. I understand that the primroses probably were a mistake because of the thorns and things like that.
I mean, I personally love that there's a little splash of nature there. It's all concrete. There's, I mean, there's little shrubs here and there, but there's just really smooth grass on one side and then concrete on the other, and it's nice to have a little bit of color that changes with the seasons. And I'm sure there's other flowers we can put in besides primroses that would not have the thorn issue and would cost a lot less than covering it all with artificial grass and then picnic tables. It seems like there is much easier solutions that maybe aren't ideal but are much cheaper and much more enjoyable to the community than what the proposal is.
I agree with Michael, and I think that simply covering it with artificial turf, you might as well just put some concrete over it and call it a day. So, so, I mean, when I think of artificial turf, that's a soccer field, but it's not a soccer field, it's just a little plot of land. So, I mean, if you really wanted to have the tables, you could just have concrete and put the tables, but I agree with Michael, that it's nice to have a little bit of plant landscaping out there. So, I think that the drought-resistant plants would be kind of nice. It would be interesting right next to the pool with all the water to have drought-resistant plants, it'd be kind of nice.
Paul?
This is interesting, this is background that I didn't know. I would be very interested to hear from whoever made the decision to put the primroses there, especially if it was originally supposed to be trees. I would speculate that they picked plants with thorns on purpose because they don't get worn down by people walking across it.
It is true that students avoid that, because when they do PE and you have to run the mile, you're told to avoid those plants.
Oh, you make a big...
They make a big circle around them, and I never see people walking through them, I guess for that reason, or because there are thorns.
Because, I know we put trees in the courtyard many years ago, and they just got destroyed over weekends, they just got knocked down.
What was that? What kind of plant?
There were, there were trees in the courtyard where students eat lunch that were put in probably in 2002, oh, 2003. They didn't last very long. It was all parent volunteers who put those in with student help, and it was sort of hard to see that happen.
Those are the square holes, right?
The square holes had baby trees.
So, the question, you know, Charlie mentioned a design professional. I don't know what it would cost... I don't know what it would cost to hire a landscape architect to look at this, but it might cost $30,000. So, I don't know, we can really afford to hire a landscape architect, but I imagine there's more than one parent in the district who's a gardener or a landscape architect who could make suggestions. So, maybe we could pursue that.
I would like to make a suggestion based upon the overwhelming comments. I would like to rescind and pull this item, actually. There is no sense of urgency for us to move forward with the proposal for the Heavenly Greens. I think we have a lot of time that we can go back and explore several options on what we can do with the pool. So, I can have Alan go back to the aquatic staff, have them discuss other natural ways of keeping color and greenery at the aquatic center, and maybe we can solicit student input into some suggestions. We had a wonderful presentation by our garden, AMS Garden teacher, and maybe we can get some information from her, some expertise from her also. So, at this point, I recommend that we not move forward with this Heavenly Greens project.
I would like to, for us to consult with some of our community members who were mentioned, who happen to live on my block, who have done a lot of work at the middle school for ideas, and we have a lot of folks that probably...
Hardy native plants, able to be trampled.
Drought-resistant.
Right, hardy native drought-resistant plants.
I'll move to table this item.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, we are asking for you to come back in good time with something else.
With an alternative.
Alternatives, and maybe consult beyond the aquatic staff.
We, thank you. We will definitely do that.
Who sound like they're tired of doling out Band-Aids.
I'll tell the aquatic staff, the public has to look at this, too.
That is correct.
Review in action, item C, we're ahead of schedule. Approve independent contractor agreement with the University of California for mandated vision screening.
Thank you, and I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Marsha Brown, who will talk about this agenda item.
Thank you, Superintendent Williams. The state has added some additional requirements around vision screening. The board may recall, we have hired a 40% nurse, and she has conducted most of the vision and hearing screening this year. She did receive help from the School of Optometry this year for free. They're not willing to do it on an ongoing basis. I'm bringing this contract forward with a request to hire them for next year to help us with the vision screening on a couple, for a couple of reasons. By contracting with them, they, vision screening is part of the residency rounds that the optometry students have to participate in, and so they would come out, probably about four students, and then a licensed optometrist. And with five people doing screening, they are much more efficient and fast at our schools, at our elementary school. So, it's not as disruptive when they have just one person, our nurse, doing the vision screening. So, it's primarily for efficiency and to reduce the disruption to our schools that we would do this, and it's a reasonable cost.
So, that's what had confused me, because I didn't understand whether we were contracting with UC Berkeley's optometry school or with the individual optometrist who was mentioned. But now I do understand, because it does, now this makes perfect sense to me, because that is probably the supervising optometrist who would supervise the students, students. It sounds excellent. It's a reasonable cost. I remember going to the optometry school as a student and having my eyes checked by the residents, and I think they'll be wonderful with the children. So, it sounds great.
Dr. Wilmer, who is the Director of the Residency Programs, just happens to be one of our parents at one of our elementary schools.
Oh, how lovely.
So, she did participate when they screened at Cornell, but there are other optometrists on staff who can also assist.
No, I understand the model better now. It wasn't clear to me. It sounds great, and it's very reasonable.
I did get back to you very late this afternoon.
Oh, you did, I'm sorry.
No, I apologize, it was on me.
About 4:30 something.
Are there any other questions?
Very late this afternoon.
Okay, okay, I, let's see, I move to approve the contract with UC Berkeley's optometry school. Is that, I'm sorry, to, what's that?
Independent contractor agreement.
With the independent contractor agreement with UC Berkeley.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, we got through. We're early. It's board and superintendent comments.
Just want to let the board know some upcoming events. We have our L cap meeting on the 13th, which is Wednesday at 5:30. On Saturday, we have the Relay for Life, and that is going to be, I believe, at the Ocean View Park. And we also have the Albany Middle School Music Band Extravaganza on Sunday, so I will be attending that. And then, of course, on the 16th, the Albany High School Albany Community Music Event, which I will be attending that also, and that's Wednesday from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. It's a joint community event with the high school.
Oh, that's the outdoor event with a picnic, dressed warmly?
Dressed warmly, okay. I did want to add one more piece. I know that both of our student board members talked about scholarships that were given out to students. The Albany Rotary Scholarship is the Jovia Award, or Jovilla Award. And that is given out, and usually it's given to one student. This year, we have two students that were awarded, one from St. Mary's High School, St. Mary's College.
College High School.
College High School, and one from Albany High School. So, Andrew Stausik is given a $1,500 scholarship from the Albany Rotary Foundation. I did want to mention and thank Rotary for all of the work that they've done in this area. Thank you.
I just wanted to mention that on Sunday, there will be a community event on the topic of water conservation. It's at Sam's Log Cabin Grill at 4:00 p.m., 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., and there will be some folks from EB Mud there and some other speakers and some tables, and there'll be some very practical, hands-on stuff about what we can do in our homes.
Yeah, I had looked at that, and I, right now, am currently obsessed with getting rid of my lawn, mulching it over, putting it, so unfortunately, I cannot attend.
Have you considered an official turf?
It stays green all year long.
I'll tell my husband. We discussed its benefits.
Only $30,000? We've been having discussions about lawns at home as well. Any other good order? You know, you mentioned scholarships since we, you know, the events when we hand out scholarships for seniors, and you don't realize how many students win so much money when you add it up, and how many folks really support students going on to college, and it's just a great event, but it's great to see that all this money helps our students So, given that, we are adjourned.
Sam, can you say Rosenbaum?